So while I was in office, I attended a lot of different conferences. So this conference that I went to was called La Hoi Hoi Ea and it was about a year into office. And it featured various academics and PhDs that specialized in the history and legal and political world of Hawaii. From before the United States was here to after. One of the presentations that stood out to me was by a man named Dr. Keanu Tsai. And his presentation focused on the legal history of Hawaii. And basically outlined how according to international law, Hawaii was never legally made a part of the United States. Then naturally, this flustered me and confused me because being born and raised here, I mean, everything that I have been taught is that we are a part of the United States. We are that 50th star on the flag. And if they're actually, if it wasn't actually done legally, why isn't anybody talking about it? How can we be the 50th state when it never actually legally happened? So I began researching. And I wondered, are there other ways that a country can become a part of another country?
I think this is where Jennifer Ruggles needs to learn about international law a little bit more. Obviously, David Tsai has vested interest in both his title company, which he's received at least one felony for, maybe two soon. And also just this, you know, whole notion of sovereignty. That he's a regional council member of some fake government. So when it comes to annexation, annexation is not session. Annexation is something else. So according to Encyclopedia Britannica, "Annexation: A formal act whereby a state proclaims its sovereignty over territory hitherto outside its domain. Unlike session whereby a territory is given or sold through treaty, annexation is a unilateral act made effective by actual possession and legitimized by a general recognition." Now, we're going to go over the letters of recognition by all of the Hawaiian Kingdom's allies and treaty holders that were given to the Republic of Hawaii before 1895. In my website, I've tried to make it a repository of these documents. Dr. Kenneth Conklin has made a lifelong study, at least of the last several decades of Hawaiian history. And he went to the State Archive and physically photographed each of these documents showing recognition of the Republic of Hawaii, which they were the successor of the Hawaiian Kingdom government. So after the overthrow of the Hawaiian Kingdom, the Republic of Hawaii formed from the Committee of Safety. Whether they were Caucasian or not, some were Caucasian, some were indigenous. But regardless, they were, you know, they had grandparents that were born here. So the countries that had treaties and alliances with the Hawaiian Kingdom then shifted their alliance to the Republic of Hawaii and recognized them as legitimate successor of the Hawaiian Kingdom. And all of this happened before 1895. There was 20 letters of recognition that Dr. Kenneth Conklin photographed from the State Archives from 20 nations, four continents, and 11 languages. Austria-Hungary, Chile, Guatemala, Norway, Sweden, Spain, Belgium, China, Italy, Peru, Switzerland. They talk about the Geneva Convention from time to time. Well, Switzerland is where that's held. And then Brazil, France, Mexico, Portugal, the United States, Britain. They always talk about their unity with Britain. The sovereignty movements do. Germany, Prussia, and then Netherlands, where the Hague is held, where the Hague Council is held. Prussia, I'm sorry, Russia and Japan. I mean, and, and these are, you know, high-resolution photographs. It takes a while to load, but I put them here because Ken Conklin's site at, I think it was angelfire.com, sometimes has a hiccup in, you know, seeing these documents. So I wanted to give another option, and they're also at archive.org. But if you click on these, here's Queen Emma from the Netherlands in, I believe, 1894, yeah, November 2nd, 1894. Well before the annexation happened, gave letters of recognition recognizing the Republic of Hawaii as a legitimate successor of the Hawaiian Kingdom. And I put Ken Conklin's address here from historymystery.kenconklin.org. And you can see these either on my website, his website, or at archive.org. Or you can go to the State Archive and find it. And, and so, and these are high resolution. If you click these, it'll take a little while to load, but you can get these in full resolution and see each page. And, you know, in their native tongue, what they had written in recognition of the Republic of Hawaii. So first, the Republic of Hawaii forms. Then they asked the United States to annex them because they don't have a standing army and they're in the middle of the Pacific and they need protection. You know, they have a lot of business interests. There's a lot of trade and commerce. They want protection. So they asked the United States to annex them. And then by 1898, they do. And so, you know, and here's the abdication document signed by ex-Queen Lily Ukulani, January 24th, 1895, formally giving up the throne and swearing her allegiance to the Republic of Hawaii. And you can see all the documents there in her own handwriting. I've got that on my website as well. So as far as, you know, a treaty being necessary, only if it's session. If it's annexation, that's something completely different, as described by Encyclopedia Britannica.
And I found that there's no evidence that shows that a domestic joint resolution passed by Congress can actually have jurisdiction in another country. So what the United States did was pass a domestic resolution for the United States that shouldn't have any impact beyond the borders of the United States. Just like how the bills that I passed don't have an effect beyond the borders of Hawaii County. So the United States passing a resolution annexing Hawaii would be synonymous to our Hawaii County passing a bill annexing Maui or Kauai or even another country. And then saying, now our laws apply to you and we get your tax money. We know that's not legally possible. I researched President Cleveland's addresses to Congress. I read the various reports to him from his investigators and the treaties between the Hawaiian Kingdom and the United States. So Article 6 of the US Constitution says, "Treaties shall be the supreme law of the land." And the second paragraph describes how all representatives and legislators shall be bound by oath to support this constitution. And that is where my oath comes from, to support and defend the United States Constitution. While I was doing this research, I received an email from an agency that claimed to be the Acting Council of Regency of the Hawaiian Kingdom. And within this email, there were various legal documents. And one of them included a link to the case repository of the Permanent Court of Arbitration that referred to a case titled Lance Larson versus the Hawaiian Kingdom, where the Permanent Court of Arbitration, the International Permanent Court of Arbitration, acknowledged the Hawaiian Kingdom as a state, which internationally means country. Just like the United States, Canada, and France, the Hawaiian Kingdom, same.
Now, the Permanent Court of Arbitration is a chamber of commerce. It's a commercial court, first of all. And not just states, not just nations can gain entry. They can call themselves whatever they want, but they can gain entry as long as they have some sort of commercial interest in an international fashion. Now, that they gain interest does not mean that the decision is in their favor. Like is according to this decision by the case of Lance Larson versus the Hawaiian Kingdom, the award, the settlement, the end of it, there is no more. Says that for reasons stated above, the tribunal determines as a matter of international law in which it directed to apply Article 3, 1 of arbitration agreement, that A, there is no dispute between the parties capable of submission for arbitration. And that in any event, the tribunal is precluded from the consideration of issues raised by the parties by reason of the fact the United States of America is not a party to the proceedings and has not consented to them. Accordingly, the tribunal finds that these arbitral proceedings are not maintainable. That was the end of it. Now, Dr. Tsai keeps saying that this is ongoing, that they're waiting for a fact-finding as directed by the courts and that there's supposed to be some sort of fact-finding committee in 2017. He is lying. It is not true. You should look this up for yourself.
... by its same responsibilities. Also included in the email was a document from the UN Human Rights Office of the High Commissioner, Dr. Alfred Desaias, that was sent to circuit court judges in Hawaii. "I have come to understand that the lawful political status of the Hawaiian Islands is that of a sovereign nation-state in continuity, but a nation-state that is under a strange form of occupation by the United States resulting from an illegal military occupation and fraudulent annexation. As such, international laws, the Hague and Geneva Conventions, require that the governance and legal matters within the occupied territory of the Hawaiian Islands must be administered by the application of the laws of the occupied state. In this case, the Hawaiian Kingdom, not the laws, not the domestic laws of the occupier, the United States." So this struck me because this is what Dr. Tsai's presentation had outlined as far as the fraudulent annexation and there not being a treaty between the Hawaiian Kingdom and the United States. And it also struck me because it's talking about administering laws. And as a lawmaker, that's what I do. I'm a United States lawmaker, apparently living in the Hawaiian Kingdom. So I sought to verify the claims that Dr. Desaias made in his memorandum. I researched the Hague and Geneva Conventions and I discovered that these are treaties, many of which the United States is a part of. I also found Title 18 of United States Code, Section 2441, that specifies any violation of these treaties constitute a war crime. And again, Article 6 of the US Constitution, where my oath comes from, says that treaties shall be the supreme law of the land. And again, Title 18 says a war crime is any violation of these treaties. And the articles I believe that Dr. Desaias was referring to is Article 43 of the Hague Convention and Article 64 of the Geneva Convention. And both of these describe how the penal laws of the occupied territory shall remain in force. Which means we should be following Hawaiian Kingdom law, not United States law, if in fact the Hawaiian Kingdom is occupied. I read academic publications and research, much of which was authored by Dr. Keanu Tsai. It took me probably 30 minutes to an hour of each page because they're so dense. And the concepts, the legal concepts, I had a law dictionary right next to me and I was constantly having to research and verify different aspects of the history that he was referring to. And I began to take it more and more seriously and it became a question to me if in my capacity as a lawmaker, if I could be liable for violating international law and be liable for what United States law refers to as war crimes. So I decided to hire an attorney to help me draft a letter to my county attorney. And I hired an attorney because I wanted to make sure that my question that I posed would be properly addressed and receive proper consideration and that I was able to articulate all of my concerns and the evidence in a way that would require him to address them. So I worked with my attorney and I drafted a letter. It was about 11 pages with almost 400 pages of attachments to our Corporation Council, also known as our county attorney. And I brought it to our first meeting in which I made my, in which I put all of this together and I started to be concerned. And I announced that I would be refraining from voting until the county attorney could assure me that I would not be incurring criminal liability for violating international law. We all received an email into, from the Acting Council of Regency. They informed us of three important actions.
Right, but so what is your position?
My position is that I will be refraining from participating in legislating until Mr. Kamala Mela can assure me that I'm not incurring criminal liability under international law and federal law.
Okay, well then, that being the case, this is only my opinion. She cannot vote yes or no and, I mean, I would urge you to just ignore that, quite frankly. But that being the case, if you're going to take the position that you're going to wait for something from Mr. Kamala Mela, something formal, you shouldn't even be participating in the process. You cannot even sit down.
The rule of law also provides the opportunity for the politics to be exposed, right? When you, when you understand the rules and when you understand the law and the procedure, it's easy for you to identify when people start to walk out, walk away from those procedures. It's easy for you to identify that, that a particular person is strapped with a certain kind of politics, right, which is not going to allow them to follow the, the rule at this particular point.
Inasmuch as Ms. Ruggles has retained services of her private attorney, which, whose opinions are contrary to what you had told us verbally yesterday, I would say don't put anything in writing. I don't want to, you know, think poorly of Ms. Ruggles, but I think this is, it's not out of the realm of possibilities that they're trying to set up your office. I would say just stay out of it. Let her make the first move. She's got to make that move.
The takeaway from yesterday's meeting is 241. Whatever response that I'm going to give her would be what was discussed here. So it's, so it's to be rather limited.
The next morning, the county attorney sent me an email in which he gave me one and a half sentences in his response. He said, "In response to your inquiry, we opine that you will not incur any criminal liability under federal or international law." And then in parentheses, he said, "See Article 6. International law cannot violate federal law." That's all he said. And Article 6, what's interesting about that is Article 6 is exactly where my concern was coming from. Because that's the article that says treaties are the supreme law of the land. And that's where my oath of office comes from. And I went to Article 6 and nowhere does it say federal law cannot violate international law. My attorney cannot even make sense of that. He says Article 6 doesn't say that. Furthermore, I wanted him to assure me. The legal definition of assure is to put certain beyond all doubt. And the county attorney did not put certain beyond all doubt that I would not be incurring criminal liability for violating international law. It was a conclusionary statement unsupported by any facts and analysis. Furthermore, he has given me opinions in the past that were comprehensive. They included case law, facts, and analysis. I was expecting him to show me how Hawaii is actually legally a part of the United States. I was expecting him to dispute that the Hague and Geneva Conventions actually apply and outline how I wouldn't be incurring criminal liability. Instead, it appears he dismissed the whole, all of the evidence that I had and just issued this blanket statement, half of which isn't substantiated in the article that he refers to. So I actually wanted to continue to attend the council meetings and just abstain from voting until Corporation Council could assure me that I wouldn't be incurring criminal liability for voting.
Ms. Ruggles is not going to reconsider her position and she's going to wait for a formal opinion from Mr. Kamala Mela. And as a member of this body, I got to ask her, I'm going to object to her opinion. And I really don't want to take that position because I've asked you several times, please just reconsider your position. If that's the case, she should not even be sitting.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Thank you, Mr. Kamala Mela. So Ms. Ruggles, our rules do not allow us to defer a decision. We either have to vote yes or no. No extension allowed. Given that situation, as a personal courtesy, we can excuse you from council chambers until pending you are comfortable in moving forward. Is that, is that your wish?
If that is my only option, then that's, that's my only course of action to take. So I will be excusing myself until I receive a response from Mr. Kamala Mela.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Ruggles. So for the record, she'll be excused, so we have...
Under the council rules, the Chair of the Council at the time, Council Member Valerie Poindexter, had to approve of my reason for abstaining, in which she denied my ability to abstain. And she said that if I was going to be present, silence would be considered a yes vote. So my only option was to not attend the meetings. I was surprised at the response by the other council members as they were also very dismissive. We had all received that email from the Acting Council of Regency. And the documents within that email were from legitimate authorities. The UN Human Rights Office, the High Commissioner, the Permanent Court of Arbitration. I was surprised that none of the council members even wanted to hold Corporation Council accountable for providing me a actual proper legal memorandum. And that the evidence that I had provided didn't even substantiate the discussion of having a discussion about it. That they're not even curious to see what he has to say about what the Human Rights High Commissioner said about there being a fraudulent annexation and illegal occupation. The fact that they didn't even, they weren't even curious at all what our legal justification was for just ignoring that. How are we still upholding our oaths of office in this situation when Article 6 says treaties are the supreme law of the land? And in 1893, President Cleveland stated that the Act stated that the United States had committed an act of war against the Hawaiian Kingdom in 1893? How, how are we not still in a time of war when no treaty of peace has been reached?
Finally, since she has chosen voluntarily to leave this board and is questioning the legitimacy of this board and the County of Hawaii, the State of Hawaii, and the United States of America, I'm going to have to ask the chairperson to at least consider, I'm going to have to do it, withhold her pay.
So instead of focusing on a dialogue about the law and the facts, the media and the other council members focused on how I wasn't doing my job by not attending meetings and my salary, how my district no longer had representation and I was being negligent in my duties and that I should resign and pay back all of my salary. Instead of focusing on the fact that Corporation Council did not assure me that the United States isn't actually occupying Hawaii right now. The media framed my action to be as if I was associated with some sovereignty group. And a lot of the times they said that, in fact, Corporation Council, the county attorney, said that himself before he had even read my letter. When I told him that I had sent him the letter and that I would be refraining from voting, he said, "Oh, it seems Ms. Ruggles is associated with some sovereignty movement or some sovereignty group." And I'm not, and I have never been.
I've heard what Council Member Ruggles had talked about and that I'm, this is the time that I'm hearing that she needed a formal opinion. But a lot of these claims is coming from Hawaiian sovereignty groups.
They were also alluding to me being a Punatec. They're making it about my father. And I was still in my office every single day, serving as a liaison between my constituents and the departments because really legislating is a very small part of our jobs as council members. We get, I mean, my office got calls every day, 20 calls a day, 20 emails on various issues, none of which have anything to do with lawmaking. There more have to do with small infrastructure issues or issues that they're having with law enforcement, the roads, parks, water spigots not working, complaints that they have with different departments. And so I served as a liaison and I continued to serve as a liaison for my constituents between the departments for various issues that had nothing to do with international law or war crimes. And many of my constituents experienced that, that I was still there for them in many ways, even if I wasn't voting on legislation. I think that the type of dialogue that we could have had would have been one of presenting different facts. I would imagine we would need to get the state attorney general involved all the way up to the Department of Justice. I wanted to see what they had to say about the UN Human Rights memorandum. What, what is the Office of the High Commissioner of the United Nations Human Rights Office missing? If he's claiming that there was a fraudulent annexation and there's an illegal occupation and we need to be administering the laws of the Hawaiian Kingdom, what does the United States have to say to this?
Keanu has an interesting way of explaining this. He often describes himself as a conservative radical, right? Or, or, or something along those lines. Like if you think what Keanu is ultimately asking for, what he's asking the world to do, what he's asking the international community to do, is not that radical at all, right? It's very conservative. He's asking them to comply with the law, not make new law, to comply with the existing law. To comply. Always occupied. Please enforce the laws of occupation, right? Like, all he's really saying at its core, follow the law, please. And the list of people who have followed the law and then got hammered for complying is long. Lance Larson, following Hawaiian Kingdom law, no law for license plates, removes the license plates, gets arrested, gets 30 days in jail, seven days solitary confinement for quote-unquote "complying with" Hawaiian Kingdom law, right? Jen Ruggles, complying with the law, following American law, citing American law, saying, "American law compels me to take this action. I take this action and ask for an answer and I get character assassination. I get people attacking my character, not answering the question."
Ask for legal representation, right? Ask the United States or the corporate council, right, of Hawaii County to provide a response, right? What is the status of Hawaii? And just, just the fact that we're starting to see public officials, right? Representatives who, who hold seats. Um, representatives who, who hold, um, um, seats, public servant seats within the State of Hawaii, start to ask these questions. Um, kind of lets you know that we're in some different times here. This history of Hawaii as an illegally occupied, albeit internationally recognized sovereign state, of course, collides with the narrative that the State of Hawaii government usually puts out there.
Ruggles is one who has not dismissed it. She's really taken it seriously and then done her homework insofar as following up on what is the actual meaning and what are the implications of this history? Um, because history is how we got here. And the interesting thing about her is that she's looked through the framework of her oath of public office. That is where she's found the potential criminal liability that she may have incurred. Uh, because and, and it's, it's interesting because never mind all of the Hawaiian history, never mind, uh, what the Kingdom would have said about this. It's just right there in state and county government. There is a violation of the Constitution, which incorporates some international treaties, including treaties with the Hawaiian Kingdom.